She goes, Bill, I want you to screw it. I got a project to work on. Oh, shit. So I woke up and I found out she was making like rope.
Barbie?
Stuff from like, uh, what did you put in it?
Did you count the balance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
My daughter was...
So, right after the roll call, before the prayer, we need to do that?
Um...
Or after the prayer?
Before, um, after the pledge.
After the pledge, okay.
My daughter must have been two or three, she got a hold of my wife's in the middle of the night. I think it was like off the morning, I had my wife's liquid foundation, and she covered her whole body with it and her tongue and mouth. Being like first at, like first time dabs, freaking out, called police and patrol, making sure she was okay.
You gotta notarize.
You gotta notarize.
Who says I'm signing?
You're signing. You're sitting next to me, you're signing.
Roz is in here, she couldn't make it. Okay, well. Just the...
Hello, Dawn.
Hey, Jerry, how are you?
What's up?
Sorry. Hey, Mike.
I saw there's a jury back there.
Before you sit down.
Hey, Mike.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mike.
Three pages long. This was on the top, so I expected to sign a check. It's not here.
The W E X?
Yeah, yeah, it's not attached. I don't have a check for it.
For, um... It was on the list, definitely, because I saw, I put it in the letter.
Well, I mean, I opened this up, and that was sitting on top, and I went to write, sign the next check, and nothing in the other ones. I didn't get that far, I'll look.
We don't look at them?
Yeah.
Don't worry about it, I'll look at it.
I don't know what she got.
But I need to, I need to have that check, if it's not here.
All right, I'll find out what they got.
Hello, Rosalie, this is Ron Moser, are you able to join us for council meeting? Okay, perfect, thank you, we'll get started here in just a minute.
Say, say. I can see, I can see.
Call Jerry, Jerry, Mike?
Mike. Jerry, Mike.
Hello, Ernest. Still a fever? Hello, Ms. Lys. How are you?
You got me? Oh, yeah, answer the question.
Okay. Well, they're on the microphones now, so everybody's gonna hear.
Don't, your part, don't forget about these when we're gonna hand the agenda.
Aren't they, aren't they there?
No, we have to add them. So, so I'm just gonna say the, my parts, but they're gonna get added at the beginning of this, yeah? So just keep it handy, so.
Okay, yeah, definitely, yeah.
Okay.
What, what time is good with you?
Do we have anybody for the prayer?
I was gonna ask Lois, yeah. I didn't get a chance to see.
Oh, you wanted to do that anyway, you always tell him to do that. Yeah, I saw it.
He's the main person.
Hey, Ernest. Ernest, I'm a little fever, are you there?
Okay, we're about ready, ten seconds.
I don't know if he got a call back for prayer, oh, yeah.
It is now six thirty on January the twelfth of the year twenty twenty-three. I'd like to, uh, call this, uh, session, this, uh, council meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Thomas?
Here.
Oh, let me, uh, start, make one statement here, we did hold an executive session this, uh, prior to this meeting. Uh, we discussed, uh, personnel matters and, and organizational matters within the city of Manassas. Okay, now, roll call, please.
Okay, councilperson Thomas?
Here.
Councilman Nestor?
Present.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Here.
Councilman Gregor?
Here.
Mayor Moser?
Here. Lois, would you be so kind as to send prayer?
Let's just for a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, we just first bow our heads and humble submission, thank you, Lord, for this day that you have made. We ask, Lord, that you just continue to be with us now as we come to do the city business. Heavenly Father, we pray that you bind us all together on one accord as we help to strive to move the city forward. We pray that we all work together and come together on one accord, and that you just give us the wisdom, knowledge, understanding, to do what is best for the city residents and for the city itself. So just be with us today, in Jesus' name we pray, and thank you, amen.
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 A pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, at this time, I need to, uh, make some slight adjustment to the agenda. I need a motion to amend the agenda to add the following motions under the director's account and finance selection. The purpose of this is to, uh, take care of some requests that occurred for the January third payroll allocation matters, and require passage by council at this, uh, January the twelfth council session. Could I have a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions?
Please call the roll. Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser?
Yes.
Read the motions, too.
Okay, here's the motions that we're going to be making. Motion G will be to transfer sixty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents from the general fund to the payroll account. Motion H will be a motion to transfer thirty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and seven cents from the American Rescue Plan Fund to the general fund for purposes of lost revenue, for assistance in the payment of police salaries and related expenditures. Motion I will be to transfer three thousand dollars from the general fund to the healthcare account. Motion J will be to transfer forty-eight thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-four cents from the refuge fund to the general fund to allow payment of the invoices prior to the moving of accounts to a new financial lender. At this time, I would, uh, like to open the floor for comments on agenda items only.
Ernest Telgrafus, on page three. This contract that you gave to Greenman Pedersen, is that the same people that did the, uh, one there at, uh, the top of Scooter Maker?
Uh, which, which motion you're talking about?
Uh, E.
E.
I mean, G, G, sorry.
Okay.
Are they the same contractors?
No, it is not.
Well, they did a good job, those other contractors.
They did, they did, they didn't put much topsoil, is the only complaint I would have.
And how did you pick these people?
They were the low bidder. They were the low...
Who's paying for this? Is it, the county's gonna pay?
No, this is coming out of the, uh, CFA, the, the state funds.
Some of those finance agencies.
The, right, this is, uh, part of the money that was left over from the five-hundred-dollar building.
Okay, so the county's not picking up anything?
Not on this.
Why? Because we went with a different contractor?
No, no, just because, if you will date this back a few months, there was some competition between us and the county on trying to see who could get things done first. Uh, unfortunately, they won, hands down, because it took me another two months before we get to this point that we're at right now, today.
Okay, but they were picking up the tab, so why would you...
The, the state's still picking up the tab, it's not, it's not, it doesn't matter, the state's picking up the tab, so it's still not, uh, coming out of the coffers of Manassas.
Did these people did any work before for the city of Manassas?
This company?
Yeah.
No.
And, um, I have a question here for Councilman Tony here, finance. Uh, at this point, going in, before we get the tan note added to the books, where are we as far as the ballots?
I will go over that when I get to my part.
You'll be able to tell us exactly the date, the total, before the, uh, tan note gets on?
Well, like I always do.
Okay, thank you.
Scott Christopher Paglia, eleven oh one Graham Avenue. I just wanted to make a comment on, uh, agenda item F, uh, motion and discussion to approve a stop sign, uh, near eleven ninety-eight Graham. I live on that block, uh, I'm aware of that situation. Several of our, uh, older residents who've lived on that block for decades are concerned, not only about, uh, that particular issue. We have a very serious issue with people driving the wrong way on Graham Avenue, uh, coming from Spruce. I don't know what the solution would be, I would think a slow children's sign might be the best option. The only thing that I could say as a resident of that street, anything that goes up would have to be enforceable. People need to know that this particular sign, or however it's going up, would need to be enforced. And in the last two weeks, my wife and I have seen at least two dozen cars go up Graham the wrong way. So I know that the police department can't be everywhere on everything.
Chief Yuhos, sorry to interrupt you gentlemen, so is this something that we can maintain like we did in Montrever, too, with getting some patrols in that particular area, just to make sure that that could be rectified? Thank you, chief.
We have a, I, I will say, we have a, an excellent police presence, uh, in, in those neighborhoods. I think it's just a question of being able to see someone do something, so...
Is there a wrong-way sign up there?
Uh, yes, there's a do-not-enter sign, and it's actually been changed within the last five years, so it's new, people just ignore it.
There's, there's a sign at Spruce, correct?
Yes, right at the corner of Graham and Spruce. Going to tell people not to go up that direction, but...
There's one at Spruce, but I don't think there's one, Delmore.
I'm sorry.
Haron, is there a, uh, one-way sign going on Graham?
Off the top of my head, I can't, you know, but I think...
Cause he's right, there's a lot of, there's a lot of traffic coming up that...
The same thing we did for Pino, I think we put three or four arrows pointing out. Give them every opportunity in the way you're doing them.
That's...
Good idea.
I think that's something we should probably think about, too, in that area. Treat like Montrever.
We get to, we will do that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two questions. The first question is, when you guys approved the minutes, you know, do you guys read it? On the open forum, I didn't see it on, on your, uh, screen as part of the minutes. When I watch it on, uh, I watched it on, uh, on the media, you know, where it's all written script. That is skipped the last three months of the year, and is there a reason, or are you not being transparent, or what?
It just hasn't been posted yet.
Well, it needs to be posted.
I agree.
If people are gonna read it, they wanna read what went on last year, not the following year. The other question that I have, also in reference to this, I said, I see you got a couple of appointments going on, which is good. You know, I think all the, all the areas should be appointed. Now, I think her name is Candace Callen.
Right.
How come you don't appoint someone to replace her? She's on two boards.
That's fine, but we don't have any applicants for that board.
But you, do you advertise?
It has been advertised, and it will be re-advertised.
It was signed there, it's not even updated.
It'll be, it'll be updated, and it'll be re-advertised, but we...
But it's not updated. And then I noticed also in that sign, that there's like people on the board, they used to be either mayors, or whatever else they were serving in, they're in three and four committees.
That's what people applied for.
So if they apply, you put anybody on?
We, we can't just appoint anybody, we look for applications.
And the other part that I, that's all I have right now, I'll go into the open forum later.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, I think that those three things need to be addressed, fulfilled. I'm talking about the, uh, either the one guy that you just signed off on, I think, uh, needs to be done.
Okay, thank you. No other comments on agenda items? Does anybody have any correspondence that they, uh, would like to bring forth?
Just approval minutes, we have to...
Yeah, we have to...
Wow. Would, uh, everybody please review the minutes, if you haven't done so already, and when appropriate, make a motion, and we'll approve them?
Mayor Moser should approve the minutes of December twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Yes. And now, we can go on to the next page. At this time, I'd ask for the solicitor to give us his report.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everybody. The past few weeks, I worked with, uh, the mayor, the city administrator, and CFS Bank, um, to finalize the documents for the tax anticipation note. You'll see that there is a resolution, uh, on the agenda tonight, as well as two separate motions, uh, that involve transferring the city's depository, their bank accounts, over to CFS Bank. Uh, that was required as part of the tan note proceedings. That's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you. At this time, I'll turn it over to our city treasurer for his report.
Mayor, council, and citizens of Manassas, this is the final report for two thousand twenty-two, ending December. Uh, garbage current amount, we received eight thousand five hundred and five dollars for December. Year-to-date, three hundred and forty-two thousand twenty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. Budget amount for twenty twenty-two, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Delinquent, except this month, three thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty cents. Portnoy, we received one thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. Year-to-date, delinquent, eighty-seven thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars. Received Portnoy, forty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-one cents. Budget amount for twenty twenty-two, hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Received interest and penalties from Portnoy, one thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighteen cents. Garbage housing quarterly, last year, we received fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. This will be the last entry, and next year, the county will be paying it separately. The budget amount for twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-three is zero dollars. Total budget amount is four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Garbage collected for twenty twenty-three, December sixty-five thousand twenty-five dollars. Year-to-date, one hundred and fifty-six thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. Budget amount, one hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. Real estate taxes, revenues. Current, December, forty-two thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and three cents. Year-to-date, two million forty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars and nineteen cents. Budget amount for the following, for twenty twenty-two, was general fund, one million four hundred and fifty-two thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars. Depth service, three hundred and ninety-four thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Parks, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand fifty-two dollars. Library, forty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars, for a total of two million eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. Delinquent city taxes, prior years, collected by city, nothing this month. Year-to-date, five thousand five hundred and two dollars and ninety-six tenths. Budget amount, nine thousand dollars. Portnoy, collected nothing for this year, collected by Westmoreland County Tax Team Bureau, nothing this month. Year-to-date, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-five cents. Budget amount, two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Total year-to-date taxes, collected, two million two hundred and twenty thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy cents. City real estate taxes distribution, as follows. Adds up with December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. General sum, received one million five hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty cents. Depth service home received four hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and fourteen cents. Parks received two hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty cents. Library received forty-four thousand eight hundred and five dollars and thirty-six cents, for a total of two million two hundred and twenty thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy cents. Real estate transfer tax, December, we received five thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. Year-to-date, one hundred thousand two hundred and ninety-one thousand seventy-six, ninety-one dollars and seventy-six cents. Budget amount for twenty twenty-two was seventy thousand dollars. Earned income tax, December, ninety-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. Year-to-date, six hundred and seventy thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and three cents. Budget amount, six hundred thousand dollars. Merchantile tax, December, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-three cents. Year-to-date, twenty-four thousand one hundred and five dollars and fourteen cents. Budget amount, twenty-nine thousand dollars. Local service tax, December, two hundred and one dollars and fifty-four cents. Year-to-date, seventy-three thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. Budget amount, seventy-five thousand dollars. Tax certifications, December, two thousand one hundred and ten dollars. Year-to-date, twenty-five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Budget amount, twenty-three thousand dollars. Manspelling letters, December, one thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Year-to-date, seventeen thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Budget amount, sixteen thousand dollars. Line usage account, unsecured payments for December, we received nothing. Year-to-date, thirteen thousand one hundred and four dollars. Line usage fee, December, we received sixty-eight thousand ninety-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. Year-to-date, eight hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. Total amount for twenty twenty-two, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. Mayor, that concludes my report for the year.
Mayor, Moser should accept the treasurer's report for the garbage fees and seized real estate taxes collected the month of December and the year, the year-to-date of twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilman Ochakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to ask our city controller if she has any comments she'd like to make?
No comments.
Thank you. New business, at this time, I'm quite pleased to, uh, have Cypher and Cypher here, and as, uh, people remember, uh, late last year, it became clear, clear to us that, uh, we had some four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in line usage fees that had accumulated over the period of many administrations, leading up to our administration. And, um, I think this is really an important thing that we're doing here, to be real honest with you. I think a lot of the reason why people... Try and... I think a lot of the reason why there is a lot of distrust for government in general is because government doesn't always do what the right thing is. Um, I think that, uh, this is gonna give us an opportunity to hear what this, the, uh, the, the, um, auditors have to say about it, and where we actually stand today, and I expect that this council will step up to the bat.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, evening, council, appreciate the opportunity to be here. As you recall, when we came and discussed our twenty-one audit report with you, um, the follow-up, uh, part of the follow-up was to have us take a look at the line usage borrowing from, by the general fund, from line usage. This report reflects the work that we did. Uh, the pages are, except for the letterhead, are numbered in the lower right-hand corner. So when I talk about page two and three, that's what I'll be referring to. During twenty, uh, twenty-one, in fact, what we'll do is start with page two, the history lesson. Going back to twenty fourteen, the first year that there ever was a balance, ninety-five thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, additional funds were borrowed, uh, sixty-five thousand, roughly, sixty-four five ninety-nine in twenty fifteen, eighty thousand in twenty sixteen. The balance remained stable seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, and then in twenty-one, two hundred and nine thousand dollars was borrowed by the general fund, uh, by the line, or from the line usage. Um, the difficulty here is that the city code calls for borrowings between funds to be approved by council. Um, we've read a number of years of minutes, there's no evidence whatsoever in the twenty-one minutes that this was ever approved by council. And when we took a look at fifteen and sixteen, there's no evidence there that those borrowings were approved. Now, the numbers at the bottom of page two are the three transfers that were made during twenty-one, sixty-seven thousand, eighty-two thousand, and then an additional sixty thousand, including over the months of October, uh, September, October, and December. The next procedure that we did, uh, was to make sure that the funds that were transferred actually did go from line usage to the general fund. Those were, uh, transfers directly between the banks, journal entries were entered into the system, so there was no exception to that. But it's important to know that what the accounting records allege, uh, is exactly what occurred. The second thing that we did, the third thing, uh, we reviewed the canceled checks, if applicable, and what you heard me say a second ago is that the transfers were all made as wires, so there were no checks to look at. Nobody wrote a check from line usage payable to the general fund, and nobody signed that check. It's okay, but what validates a transfer is approval by council, which that never occurred. Now, the fourth thing that we did was to take a look at expenditures for all those years, and determine if there were any expenses that should have been paid from line usage but were paid from the general fund, and there were a number of those. The city clerk did a good job in, uh, making a summary in nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, um, where it shows that we didn't properly allocate the wages. And there are time cards, uh, benefit records, uh, pension contribution records, and so forth, related to this for those three years. Now, if we go to page four, for the three years, this is the amount of money that the general fund paid payroll for. Fourteen thousand of wages in nineteen, eighteen thousand in twenty, twenty-three thousand in twenty-one, for a total of fifty-seven thousand. And when you add on the payroll taxes, workers' comp, various benefits, the pension expense, insurance, and some repair numbers, ninety-six thousand dollars of, uh, funds were paid by the general fund that should have been originally charged against line usage. So we're making a, uh, proposal to, uh, you that a journal entry be made to reflect and properly put those expenses back against line usage. What that has the effect of doing is reducing the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar balance down to about three hundred and fifty-one thousand. And you can see in section five, on the bottom of page four, those proposed journal entries. Now, in twenty-two, and going forward, the city must allocate all payroll. There's going to be a similar adjustment, but it will come as part of the audit process rather than a special engagement like this. We also advise, uh, council that a dialogue needs to... We also advise council that a dialogue needs to show in the minute, and a motion should be made in the minute to reflect the city's decision to properly pay back the line usage fund. The borrowings were not properly done, but this is your golden opportunity to make it right. So what you see here, the recommendation is that we have a legal and binding note, including a repayment schedule with its stated interest rate. The decision of how long to borrow the money for, how long to take to pay it back, that's the decision of council. We don't have a direct opinion on that. We'll entertain any questions that you have. But basically, folks, you know, through, we don't even know what the reason was, but the point is, borrowings were placed that were never approved, and they now need to be corrected.
Thank you. Just a couple of real quick questions. First off, I'm not sure exactly why, but we didn't do 2018. And I thought we had the numbers for that, but I guess we didn't have them all together?
Right. The point I would make is that this is not an end project.
Okay.
I do believe, and what's worth to keep in mind, the accounting system changed. We were using a particular kind of software in 2018 and back. We switched to using what we have today. The records are tough, to say the least. You absolutely need to instruct your personnel, your clerk, and so forth, roll your sleeves up and see what you can find back in those years. This project could have gone on forever. But I think what we've proven in this instance is that over the years, costs that should have been reflected in line usage weren't. If we find more in 2018, if we find justification for the '15 and '16 borrow, absolutely, you'll have an opportunity to make a further adjustment to the balance that due from general fund to line usage.
Very good. Just for council's information, if you take the money that we did in '22, last year, which included all the street sweepers, all the vac truck work, all the maintenance costs and so forth, it works out to somewhere in the neighborhood of $45,000. That would reduce the amount that we owe down to about $300,000. Well, first off, that $300,000 came from the line usage fee that we charge our clients in town, the $27. They paid that $27 in good faith to use that money properly. This $300,000, until we can justify it, has no sign of being used properly. Just as a reminder, when we first assumed office in January of last year, the January 3rd I was sworn in, I think it was the 4th that I went into the clerk's office and said, you know, we've got payroll coming up, what do we got in the payroll account? They said they had $9,000. Payroll was $70,000. There was a crisis that occurred. I worked with DCED and the solicitor, and we did borrow some money from the line usage account. We did that in the form of a council meeting.
Resolution.
A resolution. We talked about that, we voted on it, and we were informed at that time that by doing that, we were actually putting ourselves personally liable to that, to some degree. Well, we paid that back. We paid it back last year. We paid it back as fast as we could, because nobody up here liked the thought of having borrowed that money. It was something that was done bad. But we did accomplish it. We did it, I think, properly. We did it according to what third-class city code says you do. But we still have $300,000. Now, think about this for a second. $42,000, $42, $45, I don't remember the number. But last year, we did a lot of storm drains and street sweeping. Why are we going to do any less this year? Why are we going to do any less the next year? We've got a $22 million sewer project underway right now that we have to support. There is going to be a lot of work that we're going to be doing. So I expect that we could work up some sort of agreement, but we're going to get this money paid back pretty quickly, I do believe, first off. Secondly, that $27 everybody paid, that's for a debt that is one, at one, at 1.25% interest over a period of 40 years. That's when that money is used. I would say that we pay that money back, that $300,000 back, we develop an agreement here, that we do that, and we pay that back over the next 40 years at the same rate that we got the loan. And that way, we will pay it back and use the money the way that it was originally intended to be paid, be used. Just for everybody's information, that works out to about 800 bucks a month. Now, we wouldn't do it monthly, we'd probably do it quarterly, semi-annually, or something like that. But that's the scale of the money that we're talking about. To pay that $300, $300,000 back works out to about 800 bucks a month, every month for the next 40 years, that this council is going to have to pay. Is anybody going to go to jail if we don't do this? I doubt it. Could we put anybody in jail for having done it in the past? I doubt it. Let's do the right thing. Let's step up to the bat and do the right thing. And that's really where I'm coming from. Is there something we wait till the end?
No. No. Now, do you anticipate an increase in this usage?
No.
All the way for 40 years?
For 40 years. And in fact, if you do the numbers on that, sit down with your calculator sometime and take the 3,500 residents that we, that are paying into this, times $27, times 12 months a year, you'll find out that there's something closer to $50 million we're gathering. I called up the USDA and I said, hey, what's going on here? How come we're paying $27 when we really only had to pay maybe $12 or $13 to do this? And they said, you have to maintain the system we put in. And then what he's saying is you have to be able to sweep the streets, you have to be able to do the storm drains, you have to maintain the system. And that's exactly what we're doing.
Wait, you have a second, Mr. Seck. Can you tell us how much is the amount of money that they're supposed to pay back?
I just did.
$300,000.
No, he, how much? $100?
$300.
That's what he said, it's in the report.
All right, well, thank you very much. I really appreciate it. I appreciate your work. And you know, I really am going to look forward to the audit of 2022.
I, it's on my horizon. This is the extra ones that you wanted.
Okay.
If you guys have any questions.
Thank you. It's a pleasure working with you. All right, we got that behind us.
Do we, unless I want to check for $300,000, I don't think.
We have some thoughts. And to be honest, I would like to spend the next couple of weeks reviewing exactly what this all means, put together some spreadsheets, and at the earliest, next session, maybe even the first one in February, do we actually do the agreement to start paying it back. I think that we need to really work it out and make sure the numbers are all solid. The next ones are going to be kind of interesting here. I'm going to ask somebody to read them for us, but this is something we've been working really hard on the last few weeks.
A resolution to accept the tax anticipation 10 note for the city of Monessin in the amount of $500,000 from CFS Bank. See Exhibit 1.
Does that require a second or anything?
Yeah, it's a resolution.
Okay. Is there anybody who wants a second?
I'll let, I'll let.
Any questions?
Yeah, do I have to sign it?
You will.
A few times.
Call the roll, please.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
They can make a motion to initiate the process of moving all banking and financial accounts from our current banking institution, Community Bank, to CFS Bank of Charlotte Worth, PA.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
A motion to establish new signatories for the CFS Bank accounts as Mayor Ron Moser, Councilman Anthony Orchakowski, and City Controller Rosalie Anixis.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Chakowski?
Solicitor, do I need to abstain from this?
No.
Okay. So I can say no? No, aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes. And I am so pleased to have this behind us.
A motion to approve sewer rehabilitation project phase three, USDA, Ninth Street, Delaware, and Shawnee Park, payment request number five, invoice number 12, in the amount of $45,436.94 to WEC Engineers, Inc., for professional services and final design rendered on the project. See as attached Exhibit 2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion for approval of sewer rehabilitation project phase four, Ninth Street, Delaware Avenue, and Shawnee Park, to be submitted to Penn Vest by WEC Engineering, Inc., in the amount of $19,785.78 for construction management and operation. See as attached Exhibit 3.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion.
Aye.
Motion and discussion to approve a stop sign or a 15 mile per hour limit speed sign or a slow children's sign in and around the area of 1198 Graham Avenue as traffic has increased to higher levels with this residential area.
Well, this is a motion and discussion. Somebody want to second it?
Second.
Before we go on, let's discuss it for just a second here. Chief, what would you suggest as far as 15 mile per hour speed limit, slow children's sign, what would be the best way to slow people down?
Well, Joey might have to answer this one here, but if, maybe 15 is the words, you have the power to make it a 15 mile per hour limit.
I believe the city has an ordinance on the books designating the speed zones by street through the city, so you would have to amend that. I don't know where the officers would be able to sit on Graham Avenue either. There's...
Yeah. It's a little alley, but at minimum, you need at least 100 feet to do a speed timing. I would say probably the best course of action would either be signage or kind of like what they did at Mont Raven, where they were creating the lines, at least trying to, if people are not familiar with the area, they don't bear to make that left, they're like, they might register with them with something at all.
Did that work out there, Pino? Does the arrows help any at all? Do the arrows help any at all that were put up there in Mont Raven?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
That's help. But A, you still have some idiots that they can't read.
Well...
You're not going to be able to cure that. The only thing you can take care of, however, you're going to nail them, get them thick as one.
And they probably don't do it when there's police around.
I would definitely suggest to maybe get some lines painted feasible.
If we can do the same kinds of lines, I think that'd be a great idea, Delmar.
By the way, I do hear a name, and your speaker is, sir, okay? So I have to pay you both attention to what you say.
There is a whine in that speaker.
I'm sorry.
There's a whine. I'm in the same boat he is, if I could hear that whine.
I will try to resolve that, but not right now.
$500 for, but you still can't hear, I mean, you've got...
Okay.
So would the motion go forward as, here we have a do not enter sign though, right? So would the motion go for painting the lines and adding?
A slow children's sign.
A slow child at play sign or something, or slow, I don't know about slow.
Children at play or something.
That just sounds wrong.
Children at play.
You also should double-check it, Ron, to make sure that there's a signage there, because I don't think there's any sign there.
For do not enter or?
Yeah. One-way sign, I don't think there's one there when you come up and you hit Graham Avenue. There's a lot of traffic comes up that road there, and they make the left towards my house.
Okay.
I see them all the time.
There used to be signs back there. That was 25 years ago when I lived there.
Yeah, I used to plow the road in front of your house.
You did.
Can we make a motion to install do not enter?
Do not enter.
Arrows and slow, slow signs, necessary signage?
Make a motion to install the necessary signage.
Need a second.
Second.
Any other further questions? I guess we need to call the vote, roll.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion.
Aye.
Motion to approve contract notice of award by Greeman Peterson, Inc., to Advance Builders, Inc., for demolition of property of 544 Donner Avenue in the city of Monessin for the amount of $78,400. See as attached Exhibit 4.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve the appointment of John Gollum to position to the Monessin Public Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve the appointment of Ernie Telegraphers to position to the Monessin Public Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes. At this time, we've got the additional motions.
No, they're added to.
They're added to, Mayor.
Ah, okay, there you go.
So he can start with A and B.
Great, we can turn this over to Councilman Gordon Chowsky.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion, excuse me, make a motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund in the amount of $58,047.51. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the recreational fund in the amount of $730.67. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Parks Fund in the amount of $2,219.77. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nester?
Sorry, aye.
Councilman, or, excuse me, councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the line usage fund in the amount of $6,850. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Refuge Fund in the amount of $48,517.30. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment F.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Yes.
Motion to transfer sixty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents from the general fund to the payroll account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser?
Yes.
Motion to transfer thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and seven cents from the American Rescue Plan Fund to the general fund for purposes of lost revenue for assistance in the payment of the police salaries and related expenditures.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser?
Yes.
Motion to transfer three thousand dollars from the general fund to the healthcare account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser?
Yes.
A motion to transfer forty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-four cents from the refuge fund to the general fund to allow the payment of the invoice prior to moving the account to a new financial lender.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser?
Yes.
And the following balances are: payroll, nine thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-two cents; the general fund, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and sixteen cents; healthcare fund, five thousand, thirty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents; liquid fuels, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents; debt services, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents; line usage, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents; fire fund, seventeen thousand, three hundred and three dollars and ninety-two cents; grant fund, ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and nineteen cents; parks, nine thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and forty-eight cents; recreation, three thousand, six hundred and thirty, three thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and eleven cents; American Rescue, three hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and one dollar and seventy-three cents; and refuge fund has one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. And that's my report, Mayor.
Okay. Is there a reason why we skipped this one?
We may have skipped E under your initial.
Did I?
I believe you did.
The grant fund.
Yeah, I don't think there's, there's any issue with it, no.
So I don't need to have seen?
I don't. Motion to pay the following invoices from the grant fund in the amount of one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. All invoices are attached to the agenda as attachment E. Sorry about that.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Yes. Thank you, sir. At this time, I would ask Councilwoman Lois Thomas to give us her report.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, we're just going to hold off on giving the streets and library reports until our next meeting on January twenty-sixth.
Okay. Councilman Nestor?
Honorable Mayor, members of council, city administrative staff, and the citizens of Manessin, I will be giving my report and the final totals for code at the following meeting. I also just want to remind the constituents, there is a meeting February second at six PM in the North Bellevana Municipality Building for Refuge Authority. I intend citizens to go to discuss their means and manners that they're having with county hauling. There will be a representative there. My office, including the city administrator's office, is being bombarded with just calls about issues with county hauling. We still don't have an issue with trying to recommend those problems, but I also recommend the city have some constituents there to know that there is an authority that's supposed to handle this stuff, that this is supposed to be out of the city's hands. And now it's taken upon me to call county hauling all the time to make sure what's going on. I think the authority needs to be more of a presence to the city and to make sure that it's more visible to the constituents. Unfortunately, a lot of folks don't know there's a refuge authority out there, and they call ours, called, code office, I call Mike complaining. So please just bring any grief you might have there. But we still don't have an issue helping, because we're here to help.
Thank you. Councilman Gregor, your turn.
Yeah, I will be reading the Parks and Property Report for the month ending December at the next council meeting. However, there's a couple of things I'd like to bring up. After talking to Councilman Orchakowski, I've been doing some research on resurfacing the tennis courts at City Park, utilizing the American Recovery Act funds. I'm looking, depending what we do, this could cost anywhere from three thousand to twelve thousand dollars, and I would like to make a motion to get some bids. We can meet with some people and get some bids and
To advertise in?
To advertise for bids on this project.
Okay, you want to make that motion? We got a discussion, you can make a motion along that line.
I don't know if I can make, I don't have it listed here as far as making, I have to wait till next meeting.
I don't think you, if you're looking to advertise for bids, is that the authority you're looking for?
Yes.
There is a discussion item on there. The sunshine acts topical, we don't need the motions word for word. There's discussion.
I'd like to make a motion that we advertise for the resurfacing and restoration of the tennis court at City Park.
Second.
Any other questions?
Would it just be tennis, or are you thinking about having?
I'm going to see as many lines as we could paint it on there as we can, because, you know, there's pickleball, there's naturally tennis, and there's, I imagine there's some other sports that we could have lines on there for. Well, then you'd have to have two different kinds of nets, and you don't want to have volleyball on a harder surface. Be a little hard on your knees.
Okay, thank you. Did we vote on it?
Call the roll.
Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser?
Yes. Before we open it up to public comment, I want to make a couple of comments, too. Mike and I have had regular meetings with Julian, who's taking care of the Civic Center for us, and I think he's, I've got a schedule from him that every single day, things are happening over there. And it's rather interesting to me that they went out for, they took applications for the junior basketball league. They had a hundred and fifty kids walk in and want to play basketball. That's remarkable. That's good stuff. There's twenty coaches involved with this. This is good stuff. So the Civic Center is being used for good things, is serving the community. I just want to make sure that people understand that. If you, I would like to, to, we'll worry about this later, but I think it would be appropriate to put a counter at the door to count the people in and out of that building, just like they have at the library, so we could have some numbers that we really understood here about how well that, that facility is being utilized. They're two hundred and fifty bucks plus or minus, but just want to make that comment that I'm really pleased with the direction that the Civic Center is going right now, and we'll stay tuned.
I do have one other thing, Mayor. There's some rumors circulating in town. Again, have you had a chance to contact the ambulance service?
I have.
Any response back?
Yes. As a matter of fact, rumors must fly very, very fast in this town, because when I, the time I heard this rumor, and the rumor was that AHC was dropping their support of the ambulance service.
That's what I heard.
When I gave a call to Karen over there, they were there talking to her for the first time she was hearing it. The whole city had heard it before she heard it.
Good grief.
Good grief. That's not, that's funny. That's not even funny.
No, it's not funny.
So anyway, I did talk to her about it. She is very committed to continuing to support the city with their ambulance services. If you talk to Mr. Mertz at the nine-one-one service, they have a plan that if, for whatever reason, local EMS is not able to respond fast enough, they have a call list that they can call other agencies that are in the area to respond. So I don't think anything has changed right now, but I think we better keep an eye on things.
So there's no basis to this rumor?
No, there's, it is happening. It is happening.
Yeah, it's happening.
It is happening. That does not mean that they're out of business. That doesn't mean that they can't do what they're doing. It just means they lost, lost a substantial source of their funding. The same backup plan that we've had in the past. If, if they're not able to respond, then they call West Newton Ambulance Service. And there's a whole check-down list of how this works. There's, I think there's four or five on the list, and it, it works, because that is a function of nine-one-one. They, they do this. They're the ones that manage it. But it is something that is important to the city that
Allegheny Health Network is pulling out?
As I understand it.
Any timeline on that?
No. I get the feeling it was immediate.
Next Wednesday? Someone say next Wednesday?
People seem to know more than, than, than they know, to be honest.
Well, that, you know, that is, that's going to be a heavy hit for them.
Yeah, I do, I understand that.
I'm not sure how they're going to continue.
I, we
That's, that's, that's very unfortunate.
Yes, it is.
But the people of Manessin should be aware of that.
And they now are. Thank you.
Don, can I have one comment on that?
Absolutely.
If anyone's been paying attention or listening, when a Buffalo Bills player went down on the field, what saved his life? Let's be honest with you.
Quickly swatted.
Time saved, time and having adequate people there to do what they needed to do. We can sit here and say, we have forty-five minutes to wait for a cardiac ambulance, and not put the best interests of the people into it.
No, and we can request some numbers from Mertz once again to, to understand what the response time is, and we probably need Well, and we did back three months ago, and we had those numbers.
My, my comment to you, though, the question actually would be to them, how much of their funding came from Allegheny Health Network? Where are they going to obtain funding now to continue operating? I mean, if they're not being backed by this network, which was paying probably, I, where are they going to get, I don't want to call it manpower, where are they going to get the people for the coverage, and where are they going to get the money to pay these people? I'm, I'm really concerned for the citizens, and it
Well, the, the best that this council can do is to really keep the, keep tabs on what's going on, and I have been in constant communication with Karen. She, she tells me that nothing will change now. She can't predict the future, but nothing is changing right now today.
I don't know, Mayor. I think sometimes it just might be, I think sometimes it might be better just to part ways sometimes. I hate to say it, but I think it's, it's, it's time for us to
I'm not saying part ways. This evening, you should have two ambulants coming, one
You should have a dual response.
Dual response. But, I mean, we've, we've talked about that, and
Even nine-one-one.
It's hard to do a dual response if they're not able to show any of the calls.
Right.
I mean, just to be serious, it's hard to
Here's what's happened, and Bud Mertz is telling me that they're sending backup people. Well, they are, in a sense.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, as a fire chief, don't have, wait and see that none of my guys show up before I have other people coming to help. They're automatically coming, and then I start peeling them off, because I don't need them, you know?
And that's kind of what nine-one-one does. They notify the, the service here. If they can't immediately dispatch somebody, they immediately go to the next person on the list.
My, my concern, and my question again, if we had someone else that knew they were getting a dual response call, they would actually have more staffing on, in my, my personal, would that, would you concur on that, Chief?
I think what's starting to happen now is the other ambulance services are taking care of their own duties, and you cannot blame them, okay? What I've been listening to on a scanner is, is if we get a call in Manessin, where Ross Straver's on their way here, they get a call in their own jurisdiction, they're turning around and going back, because they're taking care of their area first, okay? Which now starts the cycle all over again. Nine-one-one has to find the next of its own, and get that started. And if TCA out of Tri-Community hasn't called their area, they're turning around and going back. So Bud Mertz may be telling you that they're doing it the right way, but by the time that this one didn't come and that one didn't come, now it's thirty-five minutes out of Washington, you know? I'm telling you, I listen every night to them. I wish no will we all want to ambulance service, but I do not want to see anybody lose their life because we did not do what we could do quickly here.
I respect that thought very much, absolutely. I will, let me, let me make this commitment to everybody. I will reach out to them. I will try to get a better understanding of what the implications are, what their future is. We can't make a motion tonight because it went on agendas, but, but I will try to report back.
I'm, I'm really concerned for our people in Manessin, you know, and what he just told me, I wasn't aware of, that they, if they're coming here and they get a call in their own territory.
We need, we need to look at the numbers and see how that compares.
I would like some hard numbers of what kind of financing, what kind of, what kind of funding that the ambulance service has right now. Are they going to be able to afford to make payrolls in the near term? Are they going to be able to hire, I mean? Are they going to be able to hire, I mean-
I think that's something we might need to look at, but I swear, back in September, we actually had a motion to start the process of doing a dual call. I think we did in September. So, we were already in the process-
That's what I'm saying, that the numbers should have been in front of you already.
Yeah.
It's that there, there, there is a problem.
Well, I believe he talked to nine one one and kind of dissuaded us from doing that.
I'm not an attorney, I'm not a judge, but you've been aware of this now since September. So if something does go down, if somebody gets, loses their life-
Yeah, I think I, something that maybe the clerk will have to look, but I swear back in our resolutions in September, we made a resolution to have a dual partnership with-
I, I recall us discussing it.
There was definitely, there was a vote on something along those lines.
We can review that and act accordingly.
You know, again, I don't want to, I don't want to see Menneson Ambulance Service-
No, I don't think anyone does, but-
But our number one concern has to be our people in Menneson.
Agreed.
And he's, if we're waiting forty-five minutes for somebody with a cardiac arrest-
They're gone.
They're gone.
Well, Mike will tell you there. If you were with me planting trees, I know, on Saturday afternoon-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We were planting trees in City Park. An ambulance out of Scottsdale coming for a lady on a break. Scottsdale. Is it there here in Scottsdale? I don't think so.
Okay.
I just don't, I just don't see how they're going to be able to fund themselves without that backing.
All right. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment.
I know that you talked about the refuse, you know, that they're not doing enough. Number one, minus one person for one year, going into the second year. That's not an excuse. You just received, I see you guys all received in the mail last week, I'd like to see the schedule of County Halling to the City of Menneson. The green, the green piece of paper that came in the mail?
Yes.
Did you look on the right-hand side of that mailing, two phone numbers? That's the people that you need to call. Both of them were at the meeting the first time. Well, I'd say he'd been, he'd been at our meeting twice in Menneson. He'd been there once. And it was told directly by the attorney, our attorney, that that's the number they need to call. They don't need to come to you. You want to answer, they gotta-
Unfortunately, I do because-
They got a green card. They have a green card, they got two phone numbers. They gotta call.
Yeah, we had an issue though back in, what was it, when we had that deep freeze where County Halling's trucks, pipes, or their, their pumps on their trucks went down. Unfortunately, the citizens are not aware of this, and then their trash is sitting out there. I'm, I'm requesting by going to this meeting is figuring out how County Halling can work with the City of Menneson to push out that information where something bad like that happens.
Are we giving out these two phone numbers?
They're come out, they come out-
No, no.
They, they, they sent out, we're sent to every single person.
A question, if someone calls the city, are we giving them those phone numbers to call?
They, they should get the number, they get the number.
No, they're not. They're not calling.
But we end up doing it for them as fast, and they'd say, here, next time when you can, please call. Because, I mean, I'm not gonna keep on pushing the buck. I mean, I'm sorry, if someone's gonna ask for help, that's why I got elected for it, but at the same time, the authority needs to step up.
That's not what I'm saying, passing the buck. I'm saying if you're taking care of this-
They, they get their, their-
Or they make, you make sure that they're aware of the phone numbers.
Yeah, we're getting different people. It's not the same person calling, it's not the same people going-
How many calls you get?
I would say about twenty a week.
Yeah, at least.
Twenty a week of trash being on the ground, and someone's upset about that.
There's two thousand people that pick up the trash. And I think those twenty, those twenty people that call you, you need to give them the two numbers.
And that's, that does happen, but at the same time though, when I'm having trash thrown on the ground-
All you gotta do is gotta call.
It becomes a health issue as well.
I don't know if there's ever been the same person twice too.
All I'm saying, if there's a trash issue, if somebody dumps garbage in front of my house and it's my garbage, my job is to pick it up.
I get that, but also there is in our contract that says that the County, County Halling is not supposed to leave any trash on the ground. And here's the problem, I, I, we've seen it where trash has been coming off their trucks and flowing on the ground, and no one's coming back to pick it up.
Well, if you call County Halling, you'll end up getting, I think, a place in Ohio. That was the answer in service. Am I correct?
I'm not sure where their call center is, but-
Fundy said, you know, he called in more than one.
He did say that at the meeting, yeah.
It's Ohio when you call.
Yes.
Okay, but nevertheless, I don't want to, you know, kill a dead horse. There's two numbers there. And we also have a chairman, which is Fred Fundy. And that's all you need to call. As far as Halling, you know, she does one hell of a job for that.
No, no one's not saying she's not.
And those girls, those girls and guy, they do work for nothing. And they answer the call when they get it.
And I don't think they would fashion-
But if you get involved in between, and then it comes to us, like they did the last time with the mayor and the place up on top of the hill, end up with a problem. All you gotta do is direct it to the two numbers. Everybody in Menneson got that letter. And it tells you exactly what day they're gonna pick up the trash. Now, the only job that I'm asking you guys to do, fulfill that opening. One year, it's empty.
Did we had anybody apply for it?
No.
I, I don't think-
It's been advertised.
I never applied for the job that was offered to me.
I went out and asked you to apply.
You can offer to somebody, and they'll take it. But if you don't offer-
I don't know who to offer to.
And the last part that I wanted to say is that Hallie, she's there right now temporarily because, you know, she, she wants to leave.
Yeah, I seen that you guys advertised for a new secretary.
Yeah, because she wants to leave. She's looking for a person, but she'll stay there as long as it takes until it's fulfilled. But I think you guys need to do that part of the job. The other part might be you. You do the minutes. And I think you need to do the, you know, the people's forum in a minute. There's a reason behind you doing it. And it's not transparency. And you need to be transparent. That's all I'm telling you.
Where do you want, do you want them posted on the web, is what you're saying?
What you said?
Posted on the web or provided here at the session? We can provide them at the session also, Pino, if you'd like.
And they're all, they're all bound in a book upstairs. You're welcome to come look at anywhere, anytime.
I asked you for the last time, and you told me you couldn't do that.
No.
I wanted to know how many times I cussed or what I said.
Well, I could show you that, sure.
Yeah, but you never showed it to me, and I asked for it. You said you couldn't do it.
I, I, I have identified how many times you cussed that time.
I like to see it posted so people can read.
Okay, well-
Because I think the citizen of Menneson needs to read that also.
On both the web?
And I also want the newspaper to read that part instead of giving us a sweetheart type deal.
Okay, I'm with you. We'll, we'll get those, as long as the council acquiesces on that, that-
Well, I just want them to be aware-
Would we like to provide them to the citizens too?
I want them to be aware-
Up to you.
That all the other mayors did it, but you guys stopped doing it by the same time as you guys took out the camera.
We, we, we haven't stopped, we haven't stopped doing it. They're upstairs in binders.
I, I like to see it posted so people can read it. You post everything else.
Okay.
We don't have a copy of it sitting out here?
But the last three months, they haven't been done.
We have not put the minutes. If we want, if you guys would like that, we'll- Are they not on the website? Is that the issue? We're, we're updating the website too, yes, yes.
But if you do that to the minutes, what are you doing to the film?
Nothing.
I'm just asking. What are you doing? Ma'am, just asking.
No.
Oh, no? Well, I like to see it. I like to see it in, in posted, like the rest, so people can read it, including me cussing.
Okay, I, I will do, yep.
And I don't, I don't think, I think the, the minutes to fulfill that job that is open, that I have right now. Oh, I know what I wanted to ask. Who is this people, though? You know, I'm new to the town. Nehemia. N-E-H-I-H.
Nehemia. It is a group of churches in Menneson that got together. Excuse me?
They got names?
Mm-hmm. There's, there's, it's called the Nehemia of Menneson Community Development Corporation.
Now, is this the second summit you're having, right?
Excuse me?
On the twentieth, you're having the second summit?
Oh, on the twentieth, there'll be the very first economic summit, yes.
Well, I thought it said it was the second.
No.
No, that was the first?
Very first.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Mark?
Thank you.
No, wish you luck.
Pino, is that your paper?
Is that yours?
This paper, no, this paper one of the, is that yours too?
On the podium.
On the podium.
Is that his? Is that yours?
Yeah, I did. Not only I can hear now, I can't see.
Let's focus on the employment. There were two women that you said last time who were going to fulfill the job working back here. And one never showed up. You gonna work on getting that person?
It's been re-advertised.
Okay. And then about the person to replace Mark from the City Park?
Same thing.
Same thing.
Same thing.
Okay, so we only got two missing people, or we got more?
That's two that we're missing right now.
Right now, yes.
When's it gonna be advertised?
It already has been.
Oh, yeah? Okay, that's all.
Thank you.
Linda Lacy, sixteen twenty-four Maple Avenue. I just want to address this to Mr. Nester. You can't control the trash that's left on the ground from residents. First of all, half of them do not use trash cans. So what happens if a rodent gets in it, punches a hole in it, and then the workers come and pick it up and it's, it's not the workers' job to pick it up?
I understand, but I mean, here's my other complaint is when the pumps, where their pumps on their trucks went down, and then trash wasn't getting picked up for a week in half of our neighborhoods, the citizens weren't notified. There has to be a type of a process where County Halling can let the citizens know. Or the, the authority too, saying, hey, you know, we're not able to pick up your trash due to this fact of, you know, means.
Well, that happened on my street, and you know what? I said, oh, they'll come get it tomorrow. It's, you're making a, a big issue and, and blaming County Halling when we as residents should be able to secure our trash. Now, just like Pino said, if, if the trash falls off the truck and it's in front of my house, I'm going out there and picking it up. So, it's a two-way thing. Unless you want to assign those little bins where they just pick them up and throw them in the back of the truck, and they have a little flip lid on it for every resident in Menneson, then you really can't blame County Halling for picking up trash that's on the ground. Now, I can go up Tyro Boulevard behind a trash truck and it's blown out of the truck. What am I gonna do about that? Nothing. It's, that's the process. So you-
That was just, that was just an example of the complaints. That's just not the matter.
But it's, it happens all the time. It's not something that just occurs because we switched.
Well, one of the things that's really interesting is that when they went out for bids last year, waste, waste management was a million dollars higher than County Halling. Think about that for a second. Waste management picked up anything and everything all the time. They knew how much garbage there was, and they bid it appropriately. County Halling comes in and they're trying to say, okay, we're gonna limit this to fifty-five gallons per residence. It's gonna be bagged in such a way, it's gonna be prepared in such a way, that we can do this at a much lower rate, a million dollars cheaper. Because it's public business, the authority is a public business, just like anybody else, you have to go to low bidder unless you have some reason that says you cannot do that. There's something basically failed with that. But what they entered into was an agreement that is wildly different from what we had in the past with waste management. We had, now, that contract ran out in a couple of years, and maybe they'll be back in here again, whatever. But people will have to understand that if they want to pay that million dollars, it's gonna be like eighty dollars every quarter as opposed to, you know, this is gonna be a lot more expensive.
Well, see, I think that's what McKeesport is having a problem with.
Exactly. Exactly.
But there's, but their trash fee is still lower than ours.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
I don't think so.
And we got one of the lowest, the go, one of the lowest in the, in the Mon Valley that I can see, by far. That's not to say that our, our constituents might not want to pay more to get better service, but that's the way it worked out.
Okay, when I got my little schedule in the mail, there is two numbers on there, and it does state you may ca, call the City Hall number. But then that would be your job, if you don't want to help that person, to tell them to call those two numbers.
The, the bottom line, we'll, we'll always help.
I'm not saying I don't want to help. Listen, I'm not saying I don't want to help.
Well, no, but I'm saying if you don't want to help-
But I give them the number, and then I go and help them.
If you don't want to help them, just make them aware that there is two numbers that they can call.
They're, they're aware, they're aware.
All right.
But this isn't the same people it's calling. These are different people.
Well, they, they don't read their little memo.
Well, they don't, don't keep it for a full year.
Or throw them out.
Well, like I'm saying, maybe they should just appear their trash properly and then they're more-
That would help. That would help immensely.
Ed LeFever on Keystone Drive. Mr. Mayor, I just have a, a short comment here. We now have a full-time city administrator?
We do.
Okay, let me, I was looking at the website of the city. And what I found was a description of his duties. And it reads, the mayor and city council has the authority to appoint at will the position of city manager or city administrator. Then it says, the city administrator serves as the chief appointed city official. And then further on, it says, the city administrator is also responsible for preparing an annual budget, managing all expenditures, assets, debts, trusts, and properties. I drafted a few notes here. The previous administration did have also a full-time city administrator. And that administrator worked hand in hand with the council member of finances. And so I was thinking about that. In other words, there was a check and balance system. And I looked at other communities locally. For example, White Oak has a borough manager and three people on a finance committee. McKeesport has a city administrator and a finance team. My question, one of my questions is this. Does the city administrator work hand in hand with the council member controlling finance?
Absolutely.
Absolutely?
Absolutely.
Okay. So what I'm thinking is-
Can, look at it this way for just a second, if you would.
I, I have one other comment.
Okay.
What I'm thinking is, when it comes to city finances, if you have a city, a city administrator, and you have a council member who is in cold control of finances, are they actually working together for, for all accounts? Are they, are they discussing what's coming in, what's going out, what's the best way to pay this? What's the best way to pay that? Is, is that's what, is that what is occurring now?
I do believe that is the case.
Yep.
That is the case?
We have a very active CFO here in the city.
Yeah, consider this. Look at third-class city code, because that has precedence over anything you might read on the city webpage.
No, I looked at it.
Okay, so Tony is our CFO, Chief Financial Officer. He is a CEO, Chief Executive Officer. Just like any company, there are different roles, but they gotta work together, or they don't, nothing happens.
That's what I-
I, I am the president, so it's my job to make sure that they work together, and they do.
Okay, because I'm hearing a lot of reports from the, the council member of finances. I, I was just, I was just interested. I recall Mr. Harhai and Mr. Gills, they, they actually, they, he would tell me that they did work together on all, all assets, all incoming and outgoing finances. I was just wondering if that type of activity still occurs at city, on city level?
Absolutely.
Every day.
Every day.
Okay, I just wanted to ask that. Let me ask you a question. I found this in the newspaper. The local paper on Saturday, December seventeenth, on the front of the, front page, it said, at the first council meeting of this month, December, the mayor said the city has a one point six million dollars in the bank. And then on the second page, you say the same thing. You say, now compare that to the one point six million that we have got right at the same time this year. He's referring to the last administration. That's phenomenal to me. So, there's actually, there was actually one point six million dollars?
Yeah, I think somewhere in there, if you read it, and I hope that this was made clear in that same article. The one point six million dollars included a lot of other things. It included line usage fee, a lot of art money. That knows what didn't necessarily exist in the same form the year before. But without a doubt, we ended this year without touching the garbage money. We ended this year with money in the general fund. That is something that hasn't happened in Menneson history in as long as I've been paying attention to it. That usually by the end of the year, they are using every penny that comes into the garbage account to keep things going. And then they're begging for a tan note to keep it going even further. We ended up with a positive balance at the end of the year.
And he did tell you that there was additional sources of funding that enabled us to do that?
Absolutely, there was additional.
You had the AARP money, you had a hundred ninety thousand dollar payment from-
Okay, so there is actually one point six million dollars?
Yes. At that time, that was, that was actually the case. There was one point six million dollars in the bank.
Is that true today?
It's the neighborhood of one and a half, one, I, I don't know, if you add them all up, what is it? It's one point two, something. It's, it's not insignificant.
Now, this may sound redundant, but why do you need a tan note?
Because that money is destined for other purposes. You can't use the line usage to run your city.
So in other words, you can't use part of that one point six million dollars?
Exactly.
Well, that wasn't made clear in the article.
It probably wasn't. But what I did say, that we had something close to two hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year. And I believe that's the case. Now, ask our CFO to quantify that.
There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve accounts. Line usage, again, as Cypher and Cypher explain, we have five hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars in there. Yes, could, if council make a motion to take money out and pay it back and make it through a stretch, we didn't need to. Ninety-one thousand is grant money. That's for the police. Can't touch it. There is debt service, which is gonna come due here. There's three hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars, and I believe the bill's gonna be about three fifty, three sixty?
It's in the neighborhood.
Somewhere around there, okay? That's gonna take that to pay that.
Somewhere around there, okay? It's gonna take that to pay that. And Mr. Gregor is absolutely correct about using ARP. We used, what I did was, was I took the police salaries and pulled those out of ARP money. And I used that to supplement what we did for payroll.
They also did the same thing, though. They had ARP money as well, the previous.
And also the police department received a grant of over two hundred thousand dollars.
But that doesn't pay for salaries. That is to them for equipment they need, upgrades they need, desperately need. And they'll go to specific, probably all hardware and software.
It's all earmarked.
So...
It is.
Earmarked.
Yes.
There's an accounting system for that amount of money always?
There's a budget, there's a budget, I have a budgeted amount for just the police department that's up of, up additional to what they got for the grant. That, that is just a great thing that they got because the city could not afford to spend two hundred and thirty thousand, was it?
It was two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
We, there's no way our budget, we would have that additional funds in there. And the police are one point two million dollars of the overall budget. Okay, so, yes, we just, I'm just laying this out, not making any comments. We ended up with, uh, the hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in the black. Okay, and that was from everybody that sits here, all their work. And like I said last meeting, my goal is in three years at the end of my term, at this, at last, in December, to say to everybody, I'd like to give a mill back to the taxpayers. That's my goal.
It's a big promise.
Well...
One other thing before I sit down. I'm a fanatic about the flag, the American flag, because I served in the military. And it was drilled into me and I lost friends in Vietnam, and that flag means so much to me, really does. It represents freedom, it represents this country. And like I said, I lost friends in Vietnam. Unfortunately, I went the other way to Europe. I've looked around the city and, and supposedly, the police station does have a light on their flag, and so does, so does the park. My question is, does the city building keep a light on their, their flag all night? And the other, the other section is, the flag coming into the city is not lit at that memorial. And the other way, one way I read the flag code was, there can be no flag to the right of the American flag. So it actually should be switched. Now, i- if you're coming out of Menneson, of course, it looks different. But the point was, coming into Menneson, that American flag should be on the right, and the state flag should be on the left. They can be at the same level, but if you're going to have an American flag twenty-four hours a day, it has to be illuminated at night, and that flag is not illuminated. And that means, the flag means a lot to me, because I served it for six years and I saw men die. And I think the city should be conscious of what that flag stands for. And I think that flag should be lit, and that flag should be an all-weather flag, and they make such a flag.
Thank you.
Very good points.
I've got one question, but I, I totally agree with you. I served under this class. I guess my question, Tony, is to you, is the, uh, I know you want to give back one mill back to the people. But what I see here in Menneson, I mean, we got all the angles covered. We got sixteen, uh, boards, uh, in a different, different boards on the wall that the people attend to. You know what you want I'm talking about, right?
Not really, to be honest with you.
Uh, like the library board?
Oh, okay.
You know, the trash board, you name it, there's sixteen of them, and it's up front, it should be updated.
You're talking about all the boards, not together?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's one board I don't see. What are we gonna do for Menneson? If we just gonna take the money in that we get now, and then put it back out? But Menneson still looks like crap when you come through downtown Menneson. You know, there's two Mennesons, uptown and downtown.
Well, remember something. And I believe that's what the mayor is working hard with his first summit on, okay? His job is to, as all of ours, but his primary job is day-to-day promoting and doing everything he can, as he does, to try to promote for people to either live here or see if business can come in here. My job is totally different. My job is to make sure that your dollars are spent every penny to the best of our ability. The two are a little bit different. So the mayor can go out there and promote and get business hopefully, and bring and increase the tax base, all right?
And we lost the subway. I mean, how bad can it get? We lost Salvation Army. How bad can it get?
You're right.
You're right.
So, out of all those boards, I haven't seen one board that actually says, we're gonna market Menneson.
Well, that's what the, uh, uh...
I don't think this group, on the, on the twentieth of January, I don't think that that group is there for, for that. But let me, let me finish. I know that the police department of Chalroy, Emineston, got a grant. We didn't apply for the grant. It was given to us by the governor going out. And we're glad, but let me finish.
He applied for it.
I'm only telling you, Chalroy, Emineston, got a police grant so they could get a vehicle, and that's great. Okay, so we gotta go and apply for a grant. When's the last time you guys applied for a grant?
Last one we got was for the police.
DCCD grant. Pennsylvania Crime and Delinquency Commission, through the chief, we received that grant and worked, worked with them.
When's the last time you applied for the grant to better Menneson?
We have, we have two or three in the process right now.
We've got them.
You're saying, we got grants, but it was given to us. I'm saying, when did you guys apply for a grant to make Menneson better? That's my question. Not that we got a grant, and we got, that, that's a given to you.
You don't get it unless you apply for it.
I'm saying to you, what did you do?
Right, right now, what we have is, is, uh, three things happening. We have the stamp program, which is a DCED, uh, group. That's the state organization that controls the cities and a lot of the money that happens here. They're basically fund, we've applied for grants for, through the stamp program to fund his salary and to give us another advisor, some additional supports.
So that's one in the process.
We went, we, we've made an application to HUD, Housing and Urban Development, for two people, and we, and we've got those two people that have been assigned to us. In fact, I met one of them via video conferencing Wednesday, and the other one I'll meet next week, it's Wednesday. Uh, they'll be coming into town and they'll be, these are people that know where the grants are, know how to apply for them, and will, will make those applications for us.
All I'm saying is, you were at one of those board meetings, right, before you became a mayor? What did you work on? You were appointed to some kind of a board, right?
The redevelopment authority?
The redevelopment authority?
Yes.
I attended one meeting there.
Okay.
And this is where I got out of the meeting. Okay? There's no check and balance, and they don't want you to sell the property or bring somebody in. They want you to give the property to them so they can sell it and have money in their account. And you fully aware of that, right?
Uh, there's pressure for all kinds of pressure.
What does that group do? Besides, you give it to them, they give it to one of their friends, or look for one of their friends.
I don't know that they gave any property away, but...
Just assuming.
Well, consider this for just a second.
Between times, I don't see anything other than a garage going in the middle of town, which is better than nothing. Okay, but what are those people doing? You appointed, you appointed, now you have three mayors on our board. I looked up what I bought, I think, the last twenty years, including you, that would be twenty-four, one-term mayors. That tells me they're all losers. Okay, so do something for the city. I think it was somebody from the, from one of your department told me once, we're here working for our life and livelihood, for life. They come every four years and change the rule, 'cause we got five different mayors in five years. But you need to concentrate on what is, that you're gonna do for Menneson to make it better.
I wake up every morning trying to do that very thing.
Well, you...
Sixty hours a week on a minimum.
Whatever you're doing, it ain't working. You've been here one year, and the only thing you got going right now, you got a, a meeting on the twentieth, wish you luck.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to the chair?
There's no other public comment?
They are motion adjourned tonight's meeting, uh, January twelfth, twenty twenty-three, uh, eight oh six P M.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You gotta sign one to everybody, that's...